Comment, definitely. You can hold your comments, definitely, we appreciate it. I would do the prayer and ask Ms. Chastain to do the pledge. As you know, well, a lot of things going on in this world. We had a hundred and some people killed in central Texas, many kids. We got chaos all over the world, but I know someone who's been controlling the virus. Let's take a moment of silence for this country, for these lost lives. I would thank you. Our greatest Father, we come with a present thanksgiving. Thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed on us. Realize that without you, Father, we couldn't have accomplished anything. I'll be remiss not to thank you for these and everything possible. Father, I pray for each and every member here and their families as well. I pray for everyone who made a footstep into the building and their family, Father. Realize you made it all about, you know why they're here. Father, I say the best of words and understanding, Father. This is the best I will be able to. I pray for our country, our state, our parish, our community. I pray for our president, our government, local officials, Father, and religious communities. And look at them, bless them. Now, Father, I pray for understanding and contentment, Father. I pray for peace and understanding here tonight, Father. Realize that we're gonna make important decisions tonight. Let lead us, guide us in the right direction. And Father, I pray to take a step in done here. With your mind, give it all, all the praise and glory that you've been giving.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Chastain. Ms. Harris, would you please call the law?
Mr. Dexter Armstead.
Present.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain.
Here.
Mr. Michael Cheatham.
Here.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan.
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray.
Present.
Mr. Keith Mills.
Here.
Mr. Richard Oliver.
Here.
Dr. Chrissy O'Quinn.
Here.
President Louis Kent.
Present, level corner. In the motion to approve the agenda, we want to add one addition. The addition is to discuss replacement memo on the Amet River Basin Commission. Motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McCray.
Second.
Seconded by a host of jurors. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
Can oppose, motion opposed. We have a long link to agenda, so I'm gonna take item seven first. Discuss take action on resolution to oppose Amet River Basin Commission memo plan, master plan, rid of what? Kyle Flanagan.
Yes, after a a large public outcry at our meeting that was hosted at the Bluff Creek Baptist Church on behalf of the ARBC, wanted to put this on the agenda. We've had people reach out to us from adjacent parishes as well as to our north, Amit County, all with concerns, but today we're addressing on behalf of our residents. I believe, Ms. Harris, we have a number of people.
I have a list.
I just wanted to give an opportunity for the public that's on the list to say what they would like to, and then we can proceed forward if there's any discussion amongst the jurors.
Exactly. I have a list of six individuals who will speak on behalf of opposing this this master plan. The first one will be Mr. Jeffrey DeVal. State your name, please.
Jeffrey DeVal. I wanna thank y'all for giving my neighbors and fellow residents of Felixville, the Felixville area, a chance to speak. So this is, this master plan, this is not a new plan. This is a copy of a map from 1958. So I didn't know that it went back that far, okay? So several weeks ago, the ARBC began a campaign to notify the public. And on 6/20, I attended a meeting in Livingston Parish. And I was appalled at something I heard. I heard that all the seven parishes are working together. Now, I'm a landowner whose home is gonna be taken, and I don't know anything about this, all these plans, Plan One, Plan Two, Plan Three, and all these other proposals. And I realize there's a lot of good work that's going on within, in the group, right? But I don't feel like I was represented, okay? And I don't think any of these other landowners would agree that they were represented, regardless of, regardless of the work that was done. There's lots of ways for us to work together as a community, and I think that we're all gatekeepers to flooding in the lower part of the Amet River Basin. But the tributaries of San Alina and East Louisiana Parish could be addressed before we build a reservoir or a dam, put a dam in Felixville that the Corps of Engineers has said twice won't work. Now, we can fight this in court for 20 years, or we could work together and move forward with plans that would stop the flooding or slow down the flooding, because it's, it's a water metering scenario. We just, they need to slow the water down before it gets to Denham Springs. If anybody's ever been in a flood and watched how the floodwaters accumulate, it's 57.6 miles from Highway 432 to Denham Springs. A reservoir wouldn't have stopped the flooding in 2016. They had already flooded before the water could get to or from the basin to 432. So, and I realize that's a unique event, but putting what I call storage areas along the tributaries of the co-mit, the co-mit's not even referenced or not even mentioned in the plan. That was the first thing I saw. I said, how do you, how do you have a plan to stop flooding and you don't even adjust the water in the co-mit? When they're saying the diversion canal is gonna affect water levels in Denham Springs by .31 some odd inches, does it matter if you have three foot of water in your house or four foot or five foot? You're not gonna measure anything on a half an inch or a quarter of an inch or an inch. That's just crazy. So, anyway, that's, I feel like we need better representation moving forward, and I would like this group to pass a resolution that never puts us back in this scenario again. And I have a lot more to say, but we'll save it, I'll save it for another, save it for another day.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeVal. This way, Ms. Bonnie Hurst. State your name, please.
Bonnie Hurst. I'm also a resident of Felixville, also retired from the state of Louisiana, worked over in Jackson for 20 years, actually worked with Mr. Ed. Know him well, think he's a great guy. However, Jeffrey referred to the fact that the people that are directly affected by the flood have not been appropriately represented. I understand from the ARBC board that the parish representative could either be you, Mr. Kent,
Oh, my delicate.
or you're designee. And the designee does not have to have any special criteria, they just have to be designated by you. I'm here to state for the record, and I believe a lot of people here would agree with me, that Mr. Ed Parker, all respect to you, Mr. Ed, does not represent the people that would be directly adversely affected by any sort of reservoir on the east side of our parish. I personally, on a camp where I, when I sit in the river on July 4th, just this past weekend, I'm looking at 432. I have a camp right there at that river bridge. I have a home, my son has a home, my daughter has a home site, my husband has tree farms, my husband has cattle, directly on the river. Everything we own, all the way to the forks of the river, that was passed down from generations would be taken. It would displace over 50 members, some of them fourth generation. Mr. DeVal's mother is, is my sister-in-law. She, her sons, her grandchildren, and her grandchildren's children all live in this community, in the Felixville community. It would take our entire community and disperse these families who have farmed and contributed to the ag of this, of this parish in this state. It would, it would devastate that part of this parish. And so I respectfully ask that Mr. Ed Parker be relieved of his designation from you and that a new representative who represents your constituents who are directly impacted be put in that position. And I would like to suggest a name if, if y'all would allow.
My name is Mo.
Pardon?
Not this moment.
Not this moment. But there is someone who is retired, who would have the time to go to every meeting, you know, at the 10 o'clock in the middle of the day and 6 o'clock at night, who would represent those of us who are gonna lose everything that has been handed down from generation to generation, as well as, as revenue for this parish, for its farmland and minerals as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next, Mr. Roy Schmidt. State your name, please, sir.
Thank you, my name is Roy Schmidt. Most people around here know me as Rem. Few comments about some of the studies and things that I was looking through with the, with the commission here. You know, this, I found this sort of shocking to me, something I wanna read to you out of it, if I may. And I know my time's limited. This project was studied as an LWI proof of concept demonstration in December 2024. We talking about six months ago, they run a model and a demonstration, and here we are. They've passed a plan, the legislature's approved, and we have in hearings on it. And to my knowledge, it was modeled on what their report says in December of 2024, six months ago. I can't find the acreage on these plans for either damn site. It may be in there. You know, there's acre feet, you see that reference? That's not acres, that's storage capacity, when you see that. You know, one acre, if it's 10 foot deep, that's 10 acre feet. So when they dealing with 300,000 acre feet of storage and capacity, I don't really know, I still don't know, and I seen the pictures, so I can kinda scale it off and judge it there. But you would think there would be a pretty close approximation just on acreage. You know, so when they modeled it, both of them, both sites. Here's another statement, if you read in there close, because friends, let me tell you something about a model. It's all about the inputs on a model. You can input anything and make anything look good on a model. You have to really know the inputs and understand where they came from and how they're using them. You know, and I, I would challenge this. If there's any inputs coming from 2016, when that, look, and I worked for 30 years for the highway department, but when you got a five, six-foot dam down I-12, if you seen the pictures, if you hadn't, go back and look at the impact it had down there. So we don't need to be talking about businesses and structures, because that's skewed data coming off 2016. There's already been one lawsuit that the department has lost on that, where they doing 20 some million dollars worth of drainage improvements to fix that problem. Why they don't remove it, I really don't know, but that's another lie for me, and I don't have to fight that battle no more. But if, all you gotta do is look at the pictures. So any data from 16, I don't know if it needs to be in the economic breakdown on these plans. And I don't really know if it is, but because both of them, both plans, it says key geometric information to model this dam was obtained from table 26 of the 1992 feasibility study. A feasibility study is technically not a dam study, it's whether it's cost benefit, if it's worthwhile. So they pull key data out of a 92, y'all help me, is that 33 years ago? That data was 33 years old. They used it in both studies for Darlington and up on 432. So, you know, to me, whatever, all this data, this geometric data that they used, I don't know, it looks to me like they could have found something a little more current and went out and did some more homework and got more current information. Don't use 33-year-old data to, to base your studies on. And then when you're modeling, you model something in December and you got it together in a package sent to the legislature, and I don't know when that happened, April, May, whenever it was. That's a pretty quick turnaround in the engineering world. I don't know how that happens so quick on 432, to be quite honest with you. And another thing, on 432, why was it modeled to be a dry reservoir? And my question is this, if not, why? I can't answer, but I think they need to answer. So I think it gives you some feeling for why this needs to be rejected, because there's no answer. To my knowledge, it was not modeled to be a dry reservoir, simply a wet reservoir, and it goes up into Mississippi. And why Amit County's not represented on this commission is kind of beyond me. But I do think that, you know, when they look at it, I'd like to know first why it wasn't modeled as a dry reservoir. I think I know the answer, but I wanna hear somebody else say it, and I'm not gonna say it in public. I want them to say it.
I would say a point about that. About 20 years ago, the deceased and governor was proposed a reservoir endowment for recreational purposes of economic value. But it failed to do. I was on the jury at that time also. But that wasn't the reason for it back then.
Well, you said it. Politics.
I'm gonna tell the truth.
And the word is recreation.
That's it.
You know, let's don't try to, don't sell, try to sell people, you're gonna lose your property because of trying to save people's homes, their, their property, their lives, and things like that. And you didn't even model it up there? You gonna go take, you can't tell me the acres, 'cause I can't find it, 15, 20, 25,000 acres of land, and it wasn't even modeled as a dry reservoir, it's wet. I think you, I think the word is what you just said, Mr. President, recreation. So it changes the dynamic for some of us when you, when you losing property, homes, and things like that. Now, I'm losing it to make a fishing hole. It's not to make, to save somebody, and, and I do question the data, if any of it comes from 2016, because we all saw, and if you, if you don't think I'm telling the truth, you pull up the maps, 2016, I-12, Denham Springs, you look at the pictures. Mr. Price said it the other night, and you nailed it. You could drive down one side of the interstate, the other side, it was full. It had backed completely up into Denham. And so, yeah, I, I do question the speed at which they did it, all this was done, and why they even put that statement in there. We ran it in December. A whole new proposal. You know, Jeffrey alluded to it, they've been drawing maps and dams and reservoirs since the 50s, and all of a sudden, we ran a model in December, and all of a, it's passed, it's in a plan, and here it is, y'all enjoy it. It got it handed to us. That's pretty quick, and I don't think it's quite right, you know, to be honest with you, in my opinion. And yes, I, you know, I have property that'll be impacted, you know, both totally decimated and some will be impacted in a lot of other ways. So, yeah, you know, I don't wanna sit here and act like I don't, 'cause I do. But thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Next, Mr. Arnold DeLee. State your name, please.
Arnold DeLee. About the representation, I don't think Mr. Ed Parker has any idea of what it's gonna do to us up there. We had a family reunion at the Clear Creek Church, and my cousin had the genealogical history of all the DeLees. And if I'm not mistaken, I'm fifth generation. I look across the field, right there, and there's the eighth generation living right across the field from me, okay? This property is generational. It's not something that we've come in and bought, acquired. This has been in my family since before 1900s. And I'm gonna be directly impacted, okay? I have cattle, that's my, part of my livelihood, okay? This back row back here, they all DeLees too. They hurst, but they DeLees. What they're, and they're all different generations of DeLees, okay? So I'm just telling you, this Mr. Parker, he don't have any idea what he's doing on this board, okay? Because he didn't affect it. He's there just taking up a spot. Somebody needs to be there to represent us people up here in the Fleschanas, in the northeast corner. 'Cause that's where we are, and it will decimate us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De.
Okay.
Next, Ms. Kayla Tyler Bowser. Bowser, state your name, please.
Kayla Tyler Bowser. I'm from Bluff Creek, I've lived there my whole life. I don't wanna repeat anything that anybody's already else said, that this is our heritage. It's not just a lot we bought somewhere, this is everything to us. But I don't wanna waste my time repeating what they've already said, so I just have a few questions that I need clarified. Mr. Ed Parker's vote that was included with the seven parishes, who is he representing with that vote?
The parish of Fleschana, I appointed him to that position, it's my delicate.
So did his vote represent how you feel about this project?
No, delicate.
Okay. Also, I wanted to ask, when were you notified of the master plan and what it includes from the ARBC?
When the public was aware of it.
Okay, 'cause ARBC has sent me documentation, and I can provide a copy, that they're stating that the master plan was revealed prior to, a few weeks ago, to you.
No, what?
Okay, well, ARBC, I have an email from them stating that, if I can get you copies.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, I'll get this to you. The other thing was, I would just like transparency, because I feel like there is none. I'm hoping that y'all can get this stopped and get your voice heard, because his, his vote isn't representing anybody in this room or standing out in the parking lot. So just transparency would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next, next speaker, former county chief Greg Ferris. State your name, please, sir.
Greg Ferris. And my property's at 432 in 67, basically, Mr. President, as, as we know. Most of the points, the technical points have been made, I want to labor those. I've spoken extensively to Mr. DeVal this morning, and I think he's studied it a lot. Mr. Schmidt studied it a lot, Mr. DeLee studied it a lot. Let me just kinda echo what Ms. Hurst said. To my personal knowledge, from the days of Mr. Leest and Ms. Hazel, these folks up there have been good stewards of this property for four or five generations, to my knowledge and from Mr. DeLee's comments. It would wipe out Felixville, as we know, and would wipe out the property of these people who have been, as I said, good stewards of it for generations and hundreds of years. I believe the, the matter before the, for the jury tonight is Mr. Flanagan's motion to, for a resolution to oppose this. And so I would simply ask, I would thank you for that, Mr. Flanagan, and I would respectfully ask that you pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. I'll be remiss not to let Mr. Ed Parker speak, please. Go give him a mic. Ms. Parker?
Ed Parker, East Louisiana Parish representative on the ARBC. I have served as past president of the ARBC. I have looked out for East Louisiana Parish more than once. But I heard Brother DeLee talk about the state legislature. The state legislature in 2024 by Senator Valerie Hodges passed a resolution mandating, and that's resolution number 79, mandating that DOTD get involved with the ARBC master plan to put in retention areas in the upper Amit. Now, the day that this plan was passed out by ARBC, I was not there. I was involved in a wreck on Jewel Road, right there in the curve, a guy was backing up a 18-foot steel trailer at a corner in the northbound lane, crossing the center, the left lane, the southbound traffic. I was involved, I totaled out a vehicle that morning at 8:30 exactly, on my way to ARBC to oppose the plan, but I never made it there. I am not for the reservoir, never have been for the reservoir from jump straight, even as back as far as the 50s and the 60s and the 70s when Representative Travis and Edwin Edwards was wanting to do it through the Corps to build that reservoir. And it was gonna be a dry reservoir at Darlington. You know what their reservoir was gonna be? Three 30-inch pipes. What a 25-foot earthing dam, that was gonna be their reservoir to stop the floodwaters. Everybody gonna stop nothing. I voted against that, right here, when the Corps made that presentation. I'm not for the reservoir, never have been. But Senator Valerie Hodges did a resolution mandating DOTD to put this in the master plan, retention areas, pools. The only thing that I've ever been for, and I've told this police jury and the public that come to the meetings, the only thing I'm for is taking some of these vacant gravel pits and turning them into recreational areas for the public, 'cause there's none in this parish for the public, none. Now, if that's such a crime, so be it. But I explained that to every one of y'all on this jury, what I was out to do, and I'm still out to do that. We're in the process of buying a gravel pit that's been abandoned. We're looking at two more downstream, one in Watson, one in Denham Springs itself. But that's to slow the floodwaters down. Now, can I do anything about Livingston Parish flooding? No, they keep building in those areas, they're gonna flood. They will flood. And they're gonna continue to flood. There was an issue, we talked about removing the old weir on the Amit River and dredging that, 'cause it is silted up to where the water's only four foot deep, and silting it back out. But the brother brought something to my attention. You go to southeast wind, it pushes that water back up from the Amit, back upstream. You get a good-sized hurricane come through there, it's gonna flood back through Livingston all the way to I-12. The wall they're talking about on I-12 was designed for noise. Nobody knew it was gonna flood like that in 16. So what did it do? It retained the floodwater and pushed it back upstream. But my daughter had bought a house in Denham. She got four and a half foot of water in her house. She got moved into an apartment, a two-story apartment, just to give her someplace to stay. Ended up, what, nine feet of water in that apartment complex. So where did she end up? Way to other side of Watson at a Baptist church. The National Guard had to take my granddaughter through six and a half feet of water to get her out. And my granddaughter was only four and a half years old at the time. Do I like the flooding? No. I've always talked to people about this, and no one has bothered calling me. I've, I've gotten two phone calls, Ms. Fay Morris and his brother right here. They call and talk to me in depth, and I let them know I'm on their side. I'm on their side. I went to school to be an engineer, I'm not an engineer. I went to North Carolina State to be an engineer. I understand what the power of water does. It flows like it did in Texas. That water flow was the same as an EF5 tornado, which brings you the wind speed of 250 miles an hour. Now, what do you think water's gonna do flowing that fast? You're not gonna stop it. You're not gonna stop it. It's gonna cause destruction, but all you can do is move forward. Now, I did talk to ARBC today. I told them I was against what was presented. I've always been against it. Back years ago, I voted against it. I'm still against it today. I haven't changed my idea, and they say, "Well, I don't know," but no, I do know, because I've lived through it. My house flooded in eighty-three in Zachary. Nobody ever thought about Zachary flooding, but it did in eighty-three. So I moved it back to East Feliciana Parish, where I was born and raised, and worked with every individual on this board, and I will continue to do so. Now, I haven't been here the last couple of months. Like I said, I totaled out a vehicle. I'm still walking with a stick, because I got a spot in my hip that is not working. It's not connected. My left leg is virtually shot. I'm getting it fixed, a little at a time, to where I can get around. But y'all have to understand two things. I've always been in the parish's corner. I will continue to be in the parish's corner. I'm asking, and I talked to Chrissy before we ever started this. I want this police jury to give me a resolution, because I've already told the ARBC what's coming. I want a resolution to take East Feliciana Parish out of the master plan, because it was done by Senator Valerie Hodges, House Resolution, Senate Resolution Seventy-Nine. The House was filed two-ninety by Representative Mincy in twenty-three, before we got him out of the way, because if none of this would have ever started. So I need a resolution. I'm asking the police jury for it, to take East Feliciana Parish out of the master plan, as far as the reservoir and detention areas go. Y'all give me that resolution. These people will never hear about it again. It's a dead issue.
Okay, Ms. Parker. Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
I have a question for Ms. Parker.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Ms. Parker, you said the House Resolution represents retention. How does it move from retention to detention for business?
That was Senate Resolution Twenty-four by Valerie Hodges.
And how would a dam come through my yard and my house and be not noticed?
Well, hey, why don't you ask her?
Well, you are representative.
I wasn't there when this was passed. We'll discuss this later on. We're gonna take this up ahead, up and call for a jury vote, and discuss it more from the jury.
I feel like if Mr. Parker is representing the people, he said he's gotten erect, he's not able to help in these most of these meetings. If you can't fulfill your duties, then you shouldn't be the representative. And if he doesn't have a degree in engineering, and there is someone who's willing to step up and be our representative that has that knowledge and experience, I think that's who should represent you on board.
He's area involved in my police jury district. I've been there all my life. I know everyone that's involved, okay? I want people to know that, and I support my constituents. I work for them. They don't work for me. I want people to realize that also, okay?
Because we cannot hear you.
Okay, okay, I sure will. I say I work for you all. Y'all don't work for me, so I represent you all. Another jury.
And I'd like to address this letter that Kayla had. It talks about us receiving emails and kind of that we were informed that we had received things. Now, I was told this the other day by someone on the ARBC, not Mr. Parker. But I went back and I looked through my emails. I do not have any emails until they actually came from EMEA. They were sent recently, like two weeks ago, they were sent, and that's the first email about this master plan. Now, there was an LWI plan, but it was totally different than this. It involved dredging. It involved raising houses. It involved buying property. Buyouts, and we said, "We're not gonna do any buyouts," and the raising the property kind of got fluffed down the way. And the dredging, Kyle and I were on a telephone call and were told that the engineers hadn't finished the dredging study, so they really couldn't tell us whether it was gonna work or not, and then dredging disappeared.
But also with that, we would have had to pay the upkeep. We would have had to maintain it.
They'd have maintained it.
We would have had to.
That's the reason we opted on it.
Twenty-six meetings, we would have to maintain it. We can't afford to maintain that.
So what the answer that you got here is not necessarily accurate by my graspers. I can't say that every other juror didn't get one. Maybe my email was wrong. But I have kind of randomly asked some jurors who don't remember getting any.
I never received it.
So, yes.
Any more comments from the jury?
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Steve.
So let me just back up here just a little bit. So I hear Mr. Ed Parker says he's totally against it, which is fine. So I'm trying to see what is the vitriol so much toward him when he's saying he's totally against it, which is a good thing. So if he's sitting here, it's coming out of his mouth, I want to know if that's just a problem. We don't want him in that position, because he's clearly saying he doesn't, he's totally against it. And also, yes, ma'am?
I went on the website and took a deep dive, read everything I could find on ARBC, and they're claiming that this was the first time in history of this master plan where all seven parishes were in agreement. So, you know, of course, all of us assumed that if all seven parishes, which includes East Feliciana, were in agreement, that our representative voted for it.
I feel like if he wasn't there for that meeting, then, okay, then you don't have another everybody.
We're seven. Oh, wait, six wasn't there. I'm, this is a lame grab, and you guys better see it for what it is, and put the brakes on, and back these people up.
I got you.
And all due respect, and he protected me from, you know, violent criminals, you know, when I was on the unit, okay? I love it. He's a great guy. He's having some health issues. This is a critical point. We need somebody who can physically go to every one of these meetings. There's someone in this room who has volunteered, who is retired now, and could make all of these meetings. And we're hearing, you know, they use social media. They're saying, "Oh, you know, if y'all are opposed to it, then we're with you. We're in agreement. You know, we don't want to take anyone's land." Then they go out and let us in parish and say, "Four thirty-two is the best option." People, these people are talking out both sides of the mouth. And, you know, to use old country colloquialism, I mean, Ed, you know, sorry, you don't have dog and heart. Those of us that have got, you know, land and houses are gonna be under water, we want someone that's that much affected by it.
So that's good.
It's not that against him, it's just that we have a narrow window to back this up.
So let's be clear right here. You just want somebody to go down and represent, because he just got up here and clearly said he's against it. So we want somebody that gonna be able to go and represent a little more, is what we getting to?
The constituents that are directly affected when they, and doesn't have any current health issues.
I get that. So let's just put that aside, then. So that's what we want, somebody to represent, because he just clearly said he's totally against it. So we need someone to represent you guys, and that's fine.
Yes, sir.
So let's not beat him down, because he's saying he's against it, which is good. But so let's back, I want to clarify something here, too. So, I mean, I'm sitting here listening, so I'm gonna go back a little, well, in the eighteen hundreds. So we gotta think about how the Indians fell back then, back in the late nineteenth centuries, when they wanted to try to put them on reservation. So we all sitting here, and all this stuff is coming, you know, coming back to fold on, you know, you see, everybody got quiet. But let's just have a little history here, so that we can understand how the Indians fell. I'm totally against this, so don't get me wrong. So let's put that out there now. So when Indians fell, so this is awesome. You guys don't want this to happen, I'm told. So anyways, so I just want to put that out there, Ms. Ed Parker, if you want, if you guys want somebody to represent a little more, which is great, to represent all of us. And at the same time, yes, this is not a good thing, because I wouldn't want nobody to come in and take my land or my home either, whether it's two thousand twenty-five or it would have been back in the eighteen hundreds.
I felt Mr. Ed Parker said that he went to college to be an engineer, but he did not get an engineer degree.
Can I say something, Mr. Lewis?
I feel like if there's someone that does have that, you know, experience, that should be his representative.
These are two separate items. Can we go ahead and vote on the resolution?
I'm calling for the question on the resolution. I have one in place, which I have already signed. I want you to know that, opposing the master plan in the reservoir. But I call a roll call vote to everyone that opposes. I'm gonna let Ms. Harris, wait a minute, just a minute, give us time. I'm gonna let Ms. Harris read the resolution. She have it in place. Will you please read it, Ms. Harris?
Whereas East Feliciana Parish is included in the Amit River in tributaries, and whereas the Amit River Basin Drainage and Water Conservation District has developed a 2025 master plan as a regional approach to sustainable management of the Amit River Basin, and whereas the need to reduce the flood risk in the entire Amit River Basin is of paramount importance, and whereas the flood risk benefit to the citizens of East Feliciana Parish would be greatly overshadowed by the detrimental impact to landowners and citizens of East Feliciana Parish if this project is continued with proposed reservoirs as approved in the 2025 master plan. Therefore, be it resolved that the East Feliciana Parish Police Jury opposes the Amit River Basin Commission Master Plan Reservoirs, and notice shall be sent to the Amit River Basin Commission of our opposition.
That is the resolution. I have already signed and called for a vote on the police jury, a roll call vote. Your motion first.
Second.
Okay. I'm gonna have a roll call vote. All those opposed to this.
Yes, they're opposed.
Right. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dexter Armstead.
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray.
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver.
Yes.
Dr. Chrissy O'Quinn.
Yes.
President Louis Kent.
Yes, this unanimous, that we send a letter opposing the master plan in the reservoir. I have, I have a signed copy right here in my hand. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kent.
Yes, ma'am.
This is great. This will take it to the board. What about taking it to the legislature? What's the next step?
It's gonna be my representative, representative, we take it to the legislature, on ARBC Board Commission. Now, we're discussing the next matter, replacing Mr. Parker on the Amit River Basin Commission.
I make a motion to replace Mr. Parker.
Okay. Just send it to the motion.
Second.
I feel like the people of District Seven have spoken, they want someone to involve with the decision-making, that live in the area, that gonna be affected, and I'm gonna stand up, understanding, and I really do, and I appreciate their concern. And I represent the district and these people, and I think a person totally involved should be representing the police jury on Amit River Basin Commission. Please, one second, and I would take into consideration some people's names, and forward it to me, and I would decide who I would appoint to the commission.
Mr. Parker, I would like to comment that there was, there's a video of the last meeting.
Yes, I saw it.
That the ARBC had, that was the meeting that you had the accident, and John Clark said at that meeting that you called in and gave your support.
I did not call in.
But that's what the meeting says. That's in the minutes of the meeting. It says that you.
That's what he said. I did not call in, but how did I call in?
We have to go back to the.
Well, we didn't argue about, I saw the video, and Mr. Clark did state that Mr. Mark Harrow was not present, or he was in support of the master plan. Also, he stated that Mr. Parker was in support of the master plan. That's what he said. He heard from Mr. Parker. And I saw the video, though, that what he said at the commission meeting.
So they made a unanimous vote?
Vote. He said all seven parishes was on the same page.
I would like to say, you know, we are here to represent the whole parish.
Speaking of speaking of which.
Speaking of your mic. I say, "We're here to represent the whole parish." And most of you folks don't even know I'm in the parish. I live on Highway Sixty-One. It's another world over there. I deal with totally different issues than this. I'm in one-hundred percent support of you, but I am not for, I'm far you getting a representative right there in y'all's neighborhood. That's fine. But I cannot be far bringing a man in here tonight and shanghaiing him in front, just like, it's not right. You just think about if you was working somewhere and they drug you, and you worked at the state, ma'am. All my family worked for the state, and they brought you in a meeting with about twenty people and fired you right then. That's not the way the system works. You can't bring up, you cannot bring up that the man had an accident. He's got some health issues. That's none of our business to be saying that. Y'all know that's wrong.
One other time, one other time.
Let me finish, let me finish. What I'm saying is, we need to, I would like to see that addressed, can be next meeting, but not tonight.
All that matters is, it's the president's decision anyway. That's the ultimate decision that's gonna be made by him, because he's the person that makes the person to go on him. So that's gonna be on Mr. Kent's call.
I feel like Mr. Parker came up here and stood here and said he is not in support of it, but per a video, he's saying it's his representation effective. He came up here and balled face-wise, and I don't want to even add that.
We're not, we're not being, wait, wait, get some order first. First of all, we're not being a jury here tonight, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, it's gonna be my decision, once we get a name of people who will apply for this position, will be impartial to anyone, okay? And I consider myself by the Senate delegate, a delegate there representing the people of this parish, and that's on my call, okay? I want y'all to know that. But we're not here to bash Mr. Parker and no one else. I want to make the right decision, put the right person involved in that position, okay?
I will go there and say I'm not.
I'm not, we're not here politicking for no individual person. Send me a list of names who would like to serve on Amit Basin River Commission, and I will make that appointment.
Right, but I don't want you to think that I'm bashing him. I feel like he was appointed to do a job, and he's not representing the people that he's supposed to be doing, against.
Well, I'm gonna say.
And I don't care if you're in a meeting or not like this.
I know Mr. Parker, but I don't know him as well. But Mr. Parker has been a public servant for a long time. He goes to those meetings.
But if he's not serving the whole parish, what's he in there for?
He just got through saying he didn't go to that meeting. He did not vote for it. And I'm not gonna believe what somebody said on camera, because that can happen right here. People say, "Oh, he's," until you vote, until you have a verpenut.
But, Mr. Oliver, I saw the video of the commission meeting, and the chairman stated, even though Mr. Mark Harrow was not there, or Mr. Parker, they were in support of the master plan. That's a video, no.
He needs to come up here and tell us that, in front of Mr. Parker.
Well, that's how it managed to pass with unanimous votes.
And he didn't really say anything. He should be up in on.
I don't see how they.
He should be tapped. I would be getting a strike if he wasn't allowed.
Yeah, Mr. Kent, I know y'all just voted on some resolution to the Amit River Basin, whatever. But at what point, you know, somebody brought it up a while ago, who is gonna represent the parish towards the legislators, or are y'all gonna put pressure on them to vote against this? Or, you know, how, I guess that's the main question. Everybody in here is against it. So where are we gonna go from there?
We give it our delegation, our parish representative, our parish senator.
And your state representative? Those are the people that you get.
We go, we go.
Y'all are gonna get with them, and you're gonna put the pressure on them?
We are.
They've already been contacted by a lot of us.
You know, because Amit River Basin ain't gonna have no party on anything, you know? Representatives and legislators.
Those are the one we gonna contact, that's the question. Those are the ones we gonna contact. That's the question.
I just wanna say, to go back to this master plan, I would think it would be a good thing to think of it as a puzzle. Uh, the reservoirs are one of the pieces. Some other things that, uh, Mr. Parker mentioned that he has been steadfast on and very detailed in talking to this jury about were acquisitions of former mine sites and dredging further south. So I just want you to be aware that, you know, as a group, the sentiment is to replace, potentially replace Mr. Parker. But I want the audience to know the few things that he did mention up at the podium tonight are consistent with what he's said throughout his time representing us. So those have been things that are not new. Uh, they're just pieces of the puzzle. So I want that to be said, and everybody to understand that. And those things, uh, this jury supported in a previous meeting. So I want you to understand, the support was shown for the acquisitions of those mine sites and the dredging of the lower portion of the river.
And to add to you, Mr. Kyle, we had two rivers dredged clean. Pretty Creek was cleaned and Red River. Through Mr. Parker's help, we got one point six million dollars to clean those, those two rivers. It cost the jury one sixty-two thousand dollars, ten percent of the cost. But we got it done with Mr. Parker's help. I want y'all to know that. He did represent his parish, I want you to know. Okay?
Wouldn't it be a good idea if you intended to build a reservoir, and you needed concrete to hone the sand and gravel that you were gonna use in the mix to build it? Just a thought, okay? Just a thought. Which not always what you see and what you hear, right? It's what you intend to do. I got, I have plenty of guns. I don't intend to use them ever for my defense, okay? When I looked at, and, and that's a great idea. I agree totally. If you wanna take every pit between Mississippi line and Dennis Springs and convert it into a place to store water to that capacity, that's the best idea, one of the best ideas ever, okay? But it could also be used to build a dam. Your say?
Any more comments? Any more questions? If not, send me a list of people y'all want to represent you on, on that commission. I'm gonna talk to Mr. Parker, and I'm gonna make my decision, okay? That decision is solely my decision. I want y'all to know that, okay? Who, who placed on, on- That's to replace Mr. Parker as our representative. So call for a question. Got a motion, a second? All in favor of replacing Mr. Parker on the, with this commission? I'm gonna call a roll call vote.
Mr. Dexter Armstead.
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray.
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver.
No.
Dr. Chrissy O'Quinn.
Yes.
President Louis Kent.
I'm gonna stand, I'm gonna make the decision on that. So it's unanimous that he'll be replaced on the, on the river basin commission. I respect my peers, okay? And Mr. Parker, we would have a conversation, okay? And send me a list of representatives, y'all would like to represent you on this commission. Send me some names, please, okay? Within the next week or so.
As of now, he is your representative?
As of now, I'll make the change. Y'all understand what I'm saying, though. He's our representative until I make the change, okay? Send me a list of names, or whoever y'all wanna nominate, just send me a list of names, okay? And I will consider it.
I'd like to suggest that whoever we do put lives in the basin.
They already stated.
We stated that already. We really have. And I agree with that.
Okay, alright.
Send me the names, we're gonna get it done by the end of the week. That'd be fine. Okay?
Thank you, jurors.
You're welcome. I think we're on with our representative. Thank you all for coming, okay? If y'all wanna leave, give y'all time to leave. He wasn't there, Mark Harold.
I ain't look. I can't. I know.
I just think we have no control.
Yeah, I can't look. I, I didn't know they keep my seat good.
No, we don't. We'll check it out for you.
Listen.
Get back with you, Kyle.
That, that was a warning. It might happen tomorrow, or it might never happen again. Look at Texas, look at Texas.
It does.
It does.
So, so, tell me, tell me, see, people knew what was going on before we had the final. I found out about that master plan when everybody was saying about it. All, all the things that said that we, we will have a master plan that will be unveiled. There was no details on it. But it's a shame, we get bashed, we, we get told.
Time to call the representative back on, please.
Call me when you get a chance tomorrow.
Yes, I sure will. Okay. Adopt the minutes of the, let's move on to representative. Adopt the minutes from January sixth, June sixth, two thousand twenty-five, representative. Motion? Any discussion? Question from the audience, in all their favor?
Ah.
In a poll, motion, Kent.
Who made the motion?
You have to prove the minutes of the-
Prove the minutes.
She was trying to say who made the motion?
Kyle, I did not.
Just to make the motion.
I said second.
That's the second, the Kyle made.
Kyle made the motion. Okay, new business. Twenty twenty-four audit presentation, cola and slaving. Bless you.
Good evening. Please, go ahead. How much time do I have?
Three minutes.
I'll be done in two.
No, go ahead.
Uh, good evening. We got here and handed out a little presentation packet, about four or five pages. We'll go through this very quickly. It's a very high level summary of your financial statement audit. The first page of the presentation talks about the key components of the audit. Our independent auditors report, our report on internal controls, our reporting of financial awards, and then it talks about your financial data. We'll hit all of that in just a couple of minutes. The reports that we prepare describe y'all's responsibilities for the financial statements, internal controls, compliance with laws and regulations, and prevention and detection of fraud. Those reports also describe how we do the audit, our responsibility for the audit, scoping and procedures, and what we go about, and what our responsibilities are. And then it describes our results. The audit opinion that we issued was an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion, the best opinion that y'all can get on the financials. So when grantors or bondholders are looking at your financials, they can rely on the information that's contained in the packet and make their decisions based on that. This year, because of the timing of the amount of federal dollars HR received, we had to do a federal audit, called a single audit. We issued an unmodified opinion on our compliance with the programs that we tested in accordance with federal rules and regulations. Um, as far as internal control deficiencies, we noted none. There were two minor compliance issues, one related to the timing of payroll, and another related to bids on change orders. If we flip to the next page, this is a quick snapshot of all of your revenues and expenses for all of your different funds. This year, your total revenues came in at about eleven point eight million dollars. Your expenditures came in at about thirteen point six million dollars. Over the past couple of years, a lot of it because of the COVID money that y'all received. You were holding on to that cash. This year, between COVID and some of the grant projects that y'all had, you spent a lot more. So while you are in deficit spending, you had the cash reserves built up over time to study and do these projects. So it's not like you're overspending what you have. You had the cash, and you're spending it down to do this stuff. On the next page, this is where all your revenue came from this year. Federal sources came in at about two point one million dollars. It was two hundred thousand last year, which outside of COVID timeframes, you're roughly in the two to four hundred thousand dollar range on an annual, annual basis. Your state sources about one point one million, Avaloron taxes about two point three million, and your sales tax came in at about one point, uh, five point one million dollars. Your sales taxes and your property taxes were relatively flat, a little bit of an uptick there, but nothing significant. On the next page, this is where you spent your money, um, by expenditure class. Y'all spent most of it on sanitation, thirty-four percent, which has consistently been your highest of where you're spending the money. Uh, Public Works and Capital Outlay rounded out the next top areas at both fifteen and twenty percent respectively. The remainder of the areas where you spent your money on was consistent across all of them. No major swings in those departments. The last page of the presentation, this is just your general fund. And the reason why we carved this one out is this is where you kind of, your catch-all. The money in your general fund is not restricted by statute, law, regulation, or anything like that. It is at the full discretion of the jury on how that money is spent. This year, you took in a total of three point four, almost three point five million dollars, and expended about three point six million dollars. The differential there, again, is some of the, the timing of when you did these projects for cash reserves that you have in the past. And your revenue trends in the general fund kind of mirror where you got the funding from other sources. A little bit in sales tax, a little bit in property tax, no other major swings. Are there any questions about that?
So basically, we was in pretty good shape?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we are. I'd like to compliment our staff, we done a good job. She moved the revenue, did a great job. It's a, wasn't no really find, no findings or anything. Our staff done a great job. We really have.
Yeah, that'd be three minute time?
I could compliment them on that also.
He's fine, he's making four minutes.
He's fine.
I'll try harder next time.
We'll, we'll help him with our best.
Since he gave us good news, you do.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the general, the two thousand twenty-five audit engagement letter.
You need just a motion?
We need a motion.
Motion, yeah.
Motion?
Yeah. Any more discussion? Question from the audience, in all their favor?
Ah.
In a poll, motion, Kent. Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate y'all. Thank y'all again.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we, tell again? Yeah. Yeah, accept the audit.
I make a motion to accept the audit.
I said.
Any more discussion, in all their favor?
Ah.
In a poll, motion, Kent. Okay, now we can move forward. Thank you, Mr. Rashad. Next request, no truck route on Lime Road, Scott Dupree. Say your name, please.
Hello, my name is Scott Dupree, and I'd like to thank y'all for allowing me to speak. I live at, uh, what is it, fifty-nine eighty-five Lime Road? Um, my concern is Lime Road is really getting deplorable. Uh, I do understand that it's in, uh, two diff, two different districts here.
Mr. Oliver.
Two different districts here. Uh, I call and complain about the potholes, and they come out and do a patch job. The patch doesn't work. The road needs to be reworked. Also, the traffic on Lime Road, I'd like to ask y'all to please stop the big trucks from running down Lime Road. There's absolutely no need for Coca-Cola truck to go down Lime Road. Twice in one day, I've witnessed Coca-Cola trucks going down Lime Road. I do understand that, that some, uh, residential structures are being built. And there is a need for the bigger trucks to go down that road, but it's these trucks that's tearing up our road. Uh, so I'd like to, to access this council jury meeting, however they call it, to, uh, please do something about these big trucks going down Lime Road. Like I said, it, it is tearing up our road. They come out, they put patches, and the patch jobs don't work. It actually goes from a pothole to a speed bump. So, uh, and again, I'd like to tell y'all, thank y'all for letting me speak my piece, and that's all I had for today.
We have two representatives, Mr. Armstead and Mr. Oliver.
Right, Mr. Oliver and Mr. Armstead. Armstead. So, um, I do have a question, because I am new to East Feliciana. What do I do about the speeding going down Lime Road?
We see up a speeding limit sign on Lime Road.
Oh, there's a speed limit sign, but I've been passed going down Lime Road. I, I admit I was speeding, but they passed me while I was speeding. Y'all didn't hear that over there, right?
So what we, what we can-
Go to the sheriff's office?
We would ask the, we would ask the sheriff to patrol it more, okay?
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Mr. President, would that be motion to, uh, take the trucks off of Lime Road?
That's something that would have to go through a, a hearing of, of, if you're gonna change that, don't you? Don't, it's something, it, don't have to be advertised, and, just like we do speed bumps or speed.
There's a lot more to it.
Yeah. It's a process.
Can we do a resolution after the trucks go down Lime Road?
I mean, I'm just not sure, but I thought it was a process like everything else.
And you're new to the parish. There are a lot of roads. I mean, Lime Road may look bad, but we have a lot of roads that every resident on it-
Lime Road's bad.
Excuse me, but every resident on it would like to stop the trucks from going. I spoke to Frosty the other day. We have a road that I frequently call the best road in the parish that is tearing up because somebody is bringing dirt in all the time now. So, and the road's just chunking up, so-
And you can't stop them because they have access.
We're capable of-
So we all, we all have, you got a bad situation. I know you did, but if we did it for you, we'd have to do it for everyone.
Empty mortgage truck, or a mortgage truck when there's no mortgage going down Lime Road, there's no business on Lime Road.
We have that on a lot of roads.
I understand. But I live on those roads.
Mr. Dupree, I'll say I'm very aware of it. I know Mr. Armstead is aware of it. Uh, Mr. Frosty is very aware of it. We got pothole patches. It's still sleeping over in Covington?
It's still asleep.
So we are aware of it, and, uh, maybe money will come along, and me and Mr. Armstead will get lucky and get the whole road asphalt.
We only have an old, like, a lot of trucks traveling, ten, fifteen loads of logs that they're going on my road right now. But we can't prevent them from using the highway. We can't prevent it.
And know that Mr. Kent and I, and I guess it was Ms. Shanisha, sat in a meeting with a lady from the state, and we told them the three worst roads, and it was Neesum. Was it Gillian? Was that the other one?
Yeah, Lime Road.
So, asking for some help.
I just want some help. In fact, we're processing-
I don't know if we'll get it. We'll ask for it.
Thank you for your concern. Yes, sir. Okay, next, discuss action if necessary on resident or garbage matter. Parish Secretary and Mr. Dan Moore.
No action taken.
No action taken? Even address? No action taken? Ms. Harris? No action? Okay, we, we request letter of support for financing grant, LSU action.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was asking you, no action taken on the one before that?
Oh, no, no action, okay. Okay.
Okay.
You come next, just now, I'm sorry. Now we take action on resident or garbage matter.
The garbage matter?
Yeah, Mr. Dan Moore.
Okay, before Mr. Moore comes on, I have to tell him.
Mr. Dan, yeah. Okay, please do. Just a minute, Mr. Moore.
So this is a letter from a, um, a resident that was hand-delivered into our office on June thirtieth. And she asked that I read it, um, as a formal complaint. It reads, "I am filing a formal complaint with you on the contractor Waste Pro, hired and paid by the parish with public funds to furnish-" hired and paid by the parish with public funds to furnish garbage pickup service to parish residents. For the last three weeks on June twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth, I have had to call the company to request service. Last week, I called on Thursday, June twenty-sixth, talked to a garbage worker on LA nine fifty-nine on Thursday afternoon, and called again on Friday. The garbage is still here on Monday, June thirtieth. Three strikes and you're out is a common saying which applies to this situation. I did inform the company that I will be filing this formal complaint if my garbage was not removed by Friday, June twenty-seventh. I do not know if they have current maps or reliable employees, or what the problem may be, but it is certainly not on our end of the contract. This is not a new road, and as far as I know, the parish road name signs are up on both ends of the road. My family has resided on this road in this house since at least eighteen sixty-five. I should not be, it should not be hard for Waste Pro to locate our property with current locators such as GPS. Please register my complaint in your official records. Please enforce performance from your end of the contract. This is inexcusable lack of service by our provider. Thank you very much for your help, sincerely, Anne Riley Jones." This letter was, um, sent to Waste Pro to Mr. Sam Dequilla, um, by regular mail, and it was also hand-delivered here to the office.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, Mr. Dan Moore, please.
Afternoon, George. How you doing?
Good, good.
Say your name, please.
Dan Moore. Are you formally asking questions?
I heard you, you had, you had just all concerned for Ms. Jones, right?
Yeah, and we also received a call that you all would like to appear on the, and you wanted to address the jury.
Absolutely. I just wanted to let everyone on the jury know that this was taken care of the moment I received this letter.
Can you pull your mic a little closer?
A little closer? About now? Good? All right. We did address this with Ms. Jones. We personally went out to her address to figure out what the problem was with this particular address. Found out there was a issue with a do not enter or no trespassing signs that were placed in a position that made it appear that you couldn't go down this road. But after speaking with Ms. Jones, my office manager personally rolled all the way down to find that she was absolutely correct. It's accessible for us to get our truck down and service her. So I just wanted to formally put that on record that.
So the problem was rectified?
Yes, sir. It is.
Wasn't it different driver for the previous week before the first time?
It was. It was.
So I just want to, because I heard you clarify and say she had something like, assumed that you couldn't go down a road because of the no trespassing sign. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that makes sense. That maybe be one of the reasons why your drivers didn't go down that road.
Absolutely, absolutely.
GPS shows that road going down.
Mm-hmm.
But it don't stop there. We've had to do search and rescue out there many times already.
So have you seen those signs out there as well? Okay.
I have also seen them.
I know there's an excuse for protestation. However, I call every single week. It goes up to me. I would replace, we replaced y'all six months ago. But nobody on the jury wanted to do that. They want to give y'all time. We give y'all time. I'm done giving y'all time. I'm tired of having to call every single day on the same people, the same people every week. And I think it's inexcusable. I completely understand this.
I would like to make the suggestion that y'all can put it on the agenda maybe for next month to renegotiate the contract. We talked about this in December. We talked about this in January. I made the suggestion to the jury bringing that before the jury to renegotiate the contract with Waste Pro, and that that will be my suggestion on that matter.
When is our contract? Does anybody know when our contract is up with Waste Pro?
I believe it's March of next year. I don't know the.
The general consensus was by the time we get a new company to learn the rules, yeah, yeah, which you're gonna have to learn the rules anyway. So you might as well get somebody to get it done and learn the rules. It's considered another year and a half of the same every single week. I mean, y'all have to get tired of hearing from me, from Rachel Kelly, from different jurors. Y'all had excuses of, oh, we have new drivers. We have this. We have that. You're running a business.
Absolutely.
You're getting paid by us, and I feel like that y'all should, you know, pick your service. It's not working.
I'd like to say something on the specific instance in which you're referring to and the letter refers to. Uh, and Mr. Frosty's office is aware of it. Uh, that road, you can come in from two different ways to access the home. On the eastern portion of that road, the name sign is missing. On the western portion, the name sign is up, but they are aware of it, and I'm sure they're gonna get it replaced. I'm sure that will also help y'all's drivers, depending on which direction you're accessing at that time.
And I would like to ask, like I almost always ask, when you call, because we still have residents, and I think that's what Anne did, was call that Waste Pro number, the seven, four, the call center. Your call center doesn't know anything about that, and that's your fault. That's, I mean, not you personally.
Yes, ma'am.
But this has been the situation with Waste Pro from day number one. They want to tell us, you can't have a one trash can. They want to tell us they can't pick up bags. They want to tell us this, that, the other. They don't know what they're talking about. They just need to keep their mouth shut if they don't know.
That's why it's good to do what Mr. Sam said. We need to go back to the table and renegotiate the contract.
There's nothing in our favor in the contract. It's strictly in their favor. So.
I know there's been a couple instances too, when I call, um, residents. We know there's a residence there, and when it's pulled up, Waste Pro doesn't see it at all. Don't even show a residence there. And we can argue to the point that we know there's a residence there, but if you don't see it, how do you?
Service it.
Yeah. I mean, you know, then picking up trash there forever, and all of a sudden.
Have I addressed it, actually pinpointed?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was actually the one I was telling you about.
In all reality, we got a sales tax collecting solid waste. Any home in this parish that have garbage y'all should be picked up.
And I will say, anytime I call, anytime I've ever called and talked to Waste Pro, they came that exact same day. I don't know who Ms. Riley Anne Jones was talking to, or maybe she didn't talk to him like she should have. I don't know. They got known. I call every single week, but I shouldn't have to call to make sure that they're doing the job.
Agreed.
You shouldn't pass the household because.
If you see a hand, pick it up.
Pick it up.
Agreed.
Or pick up half of it and leave the other half.
No.
That's happened.
Yes, sir.
That has been done.
We have a year, month, four, five months on the contract.
Yeah, December twenty-sixth.
I said, you're gonna, I said, you're gonna hang.
A year, year and a half.
This, 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 this is six months here, but you're gonna hang. So President, your, our representative DA said, they tried to negotiate the contract. But we have one in place already. Could we break the contract rather than have it placed for Sam or what? Could we break the contract rather than have it placed? Because we have a contract with them already.
Yeah, if you, if you talk with.
I can tell you, you can do whatever you want to do, except keep bringing it up at these meetings. You should do something about it either. You want to renegotiate the contract or try somebody else to do it. They come to these meetings.
How many weeks does that happen?
I would just say you should just be playing back up, renegotiating the contract.
Can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
It's got to be on the next meeting, too. No, we can't do it. It's not only on the general, so we have to do it at the next meeting.
And please, in the meantime, get your, uh, your center that answers. I mean, we've been asking for that for the entire time we've dealt with Waste Pro.
Yeah, the entire length of the contract.
Entire length.
She's right, because I've experienced it myself, so.
I mean, I don't know, you know, and I get it. Sometimes calls forward down to New Orleans. That's what used to happen.
Correct.
And, but, um, can't have that. We just, you know, if that's what you're doing, stop it.
I think at the last meeting, I, I, I know you're fairly.
You're new, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
In here, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm a big, I'm a big boy.
With Waste Pro, we were told that that was fixed, that they would have someone, uh, local.
They also were gonna have somebody calling the truck.
And they may have really talked to someone, and right, that was tough, because that was supposed to be changed. I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, did, but that's what we were told.
Well, I appreciate you going out there and talking to them.
Yes, ma'am.
So at the next meeting, we discussed, we go, go, we negotiate the contract with Waste Pro for the following eighteen months of the contract. At the next meeting?
Let's table for the next meeting?
Yeah.
And Waste, you have someone else to meet you.
Absolutely, yes.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
You can take your advice, Mr. David.
And let me just ask somebody with the, with the authority to renegotiate, right?
Sam?
Yes.
You don't have to feel, they'll be here. They'll be here.
No, let's go. No, let's go, yeah, let's just go through the, uh, the dev committee. I scheduled a meeting next week before the regular meeting, following the way. Make a motion to break it before the dev committee. Suck it?
Suck it.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
In a poll, motion carried. Okay, let's move on. Request letter of support for Pennington Grant. Now, it's your turn.
Okay, thank you. I'm Jessie Hoover. I'm the horticulture agent for the LSU Ag Center here in East Felicia Parish. And today I'd like to ask for your support. Our office is applying for a grant with the Pennington Foundation to expand our conference room. And it would go from around four hundred and seventy-five square feet to fourteen hundred square feet, which would help us have bigger meetings. We wouldn't have to limit size. Currently, we can fit twenty people in a classroom-style kind of uncomfortably in there. And so what we would really like to do is expand that and make it ADA accessible, because we do have a conference room at the observatory, which is great. It's about four, you could fit about forty people in it uncomfortably, but, uh, but it's not accessible. There's no elevator to get upstairs. Um, the bathrooms aren't ADA accessible and things like that. So, um, my boss, Dr. Donna Gentry, has kind of led the charge to apply for this grant. They have, she's gotten the architect to draw up plans. I put a little paper at your, uh, at your spot there where you can look at the plans for the building and how they're gonna expand the conference room, which would then hold about sixty-five or seventy people. And just personally, I could tell you, this would be a big help for me. Next year, I'm planning to do a master gardener class in Clinton, and I wouldn't have to limit the size of the class to, you know, about fifteen or so people, so that would be wonderful. Uh, our four-H group could hold their hunter's safety classes there. Um, I could hold educational seminars for horticulture. I've been extremely lucky myself to be able to use, um, the Veterans Building and Jackson, the church here in Clinton, and, um, and we've used multiple buildings in West Felicia too, because I, I do both parishes. But a building like this would be a game changer for us at the office and also increase accessibility to our office. We would also, in the plans, they have drawn kind of a little demonstration kitchen so that our new, um, nutrition agent could do food demonstrations for her classes as well. So we are asking the Pennington Foundation for the money for this, but we feel that a letter from the police jury would really strengthen our efforts, just that y'all support us in this endeavor, and that's what I'm asking for today. Thank you.
We do support you. Most in favor? What about Ms. Tessie, Senator Quinn? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
In a poll, motion carried.
Thank you.
I have a letter of support. I'll sign it tomorrow morning. You can pick it up.
Okay, yes, sir. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, number six, park usage request for Mr. Destner.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President. And I'm just, we not gonna limit this to, like, uh, to the, the park in my district, but we, you know, of course, we had, I'm not gonna go into details, but we had a little issue with, um, I guess with a big event or a gathering. Now, I will say this, we not trying to eliminate folks from using the park. So if you have your family, you just want to show up and go out there and pull up and get out there and enjoy the park. We talking about these large events where you gonna have a lot of people, or you trying to, uh, you know, big partis and stuff or what have you. When is, let's just say there's gonna be a lot of folks out in the park. So I do have a, um, um, like a park usage request form. We did get, um, our representative, Mr. Sam Dequilla, to look over it. And, Mr. President, if you want me to read, I can go through it right quickly.
Go ahead, please do.
Okay. It says park usage request form for organized events. And you got your contact name, contact phone number, name, organization if applicable, and a name of requested park for usage, date requested, type of function, and estimated of the number of attendees. Also, uh, we agree, uh, to the following provision if requested, if it is approved. We agree to hold the East Felicia Parish Police Jury free and harmless form from any or all claims resulting from use. We agree to provide the East Felicia Parish Police Jury with a certificate of insurance with liability limits in the amount of not less than one hundred thousand dollars. The certificate must name the East Felicia Parish Police Jury and accept liability of personal injury and property damage as it may result from the use of the park. We agree to assume full responsibility. Now, when I say we, that's the person who's coming in and maybe want to use the, the park, so let's just make that clearly. So, uh, assume full responsibility for damage and or maintenance expenses resulting directly or indirectly from their use of the requested buildings and or grounds. Agree to clean up the park after usage. Agree to follow attached park rules and regulation. The requester may, uh, be required to have approval from the East Felicia Parish Sheriff Office depending on the function type and the number of attendees. The requester may be required to hire deputy of the East Felicia Parish Sheriff Office at a fee to be determined by the Sheriff Office. Failure to follow any applicable rules, regulations, or agreed-upon requirements can result in the termination of the event and denial of future requests. And we have at the bottom where we have the signature of the requesters, Sheriff Office approval, East Felicia Parish Police Jury approval, which of course would also be in conjunction with the president, the sitting president, we should have that on there as well, but this, that would be great. Of course, Ms. Yomishu, who was the acting, uh, parish manager at the time, so we definitely like that. And, and of course, when it comes here, everybody, all the jurors should be notified when those events coming up through. So if you invite to hear somebody on the street, everybody would be aware of what's going on. And again, I would like to say that this is just not, if anyone has has a park in their district and like the way they sound, it's just not dedicated to the park in my district, and just for the park use when you have in large events. Because we did have a, you know, it wasn't a major issue, but it had a issue, but, so we want to get into that. That's why we trying to come up with this one.
I, I had two questions.
Yes.
And it'd probably be directed to Mr. Dequilla. Uh, in the time slot, he didn't mention that. Should we put a start time as well as an end time?
Yeah, dusted on, right?
The way it's. The way it's written currently just says time, and it leaves a slot.
The park, I forgot there are some rules that's on that's actually stated on the park.
Dusted on.
And you got, you know, from, well, I guess that would be thing, just to put it in that contract as well, too.
Yeah, that's what I was more concerned with. It needs to be in writing and agreed upon.
At dark, you know, most parks close down, closes down anyways, but that makes sense because someone, well, you know, nobody tell me what time, so.
Right.
That makes sense.
And then the only other question I had, Mr. Dequilla, was about the insurance. Do you feel as though the hundred thousand is sufficient, or should we ask for more to protect us, the jury?
Yeah, you might get asked for a little bit more, but strictly, I think the school board is for a million, a million dollar.
We need to make.
It's not a lot of difference, uh, when you buy the insurance, but.
And that was my number of choice, because that's everybody, uh, in any kind of industry. The million is the number that you hear and that you wind up having to get. You know, might be worth a discussion. Maybe don't, we don't want to go that far. I don't know. But I just felt like the hundred thousand left us, the jury, open, is what I felt, and I'll just say that for what it's worth.
Hundred thousand dollars worth of physical damage.
That's right, and so that's why I said.
Multiple people, you talking about?
That's right.
Are you talking about events? You talking about like big, large events? We have some little things that go on in the park.
Little, little tournaments or something like that, parties?
That's, that's different.
This is gonna be like.
Parties or something.
Organized.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, organized events. People trying to have family reunions and, and, yeah, just.
It should be uniform, because we had a, a bash up in law a couple of weeks ago. It got out of hand, people fighting and doing everything else, so it should be uniform for all parks.
That's true.
I, I have a question about number four. Do you want to maybe put, when do you want it cleaned up?
It's cleaned up, it's cleaned it up directly after you.
I've been using it. Same thing that Trill, when it do clean up.
Does anybody understand that? We agree to clean up of the park after usage, not four days later?
No.
Immediately.
Immediately after.
Immediately, immediately. Or within twenty-four hours or something like that.
No, if they leave, they don't come back. You gotta get a deposit in.
For Trill, we get two hundred fifty dollars deposit for cleanup. Any more questions?
This was the only discussion, I guess it was just a hundred thousand. Can we just go to five hundred thousand to, uh, do a million? How y'all feel about it?
I'm fine with either one, it's up to the jury.
Yeah, a hundred probably ain't enough.
A hundred's not...
Anything more?
Just go at a half a million, nothing good.
Five hundred thousand.
The policies are, are moving. They're not expensive. It's just one day, but then maybe a hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm. So we can go to a half a million, Mr. Yamisha, we can change that to a half a million.
To five hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll make a motion, a motion effect, that we adopt the regulate, uh, rules and regulations.
Yes, I made the motion to accept the rules and regulations just for all parks.
Motion carries.
Any more discussion? Oh, question for the audience, yes, sir.
John Rusheon, I just want to remind the jury, if y'all adopt this tonight, it's good to y'all term is, if there's no ordinance put in place. In the meantime, so, to keep that, make that part of your motion that there's going to be an ordinance developed to make this part of the ordinance process, because this adoption tonight covers you for about a year and a few months.
Two years and six months.
Yeah.
Two years and six months. Because we have two years and six months until I return. I keep up with the date. Yes. Yeah, let me, yeah.
Just round it off.
Two, six.
Uh, just run your motion. That's, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
In a poll, motion carries.
And I do want to say, um, the idea you to order the funds for the Churchill Park and...
H Street, H Street Park. I said no one.
I believe you have the purchase order.
Yeah. You have one for H Street Park also, right? Okay, let's move on. Approved agreement with DOTD for the use of Caruth Road and Wilson Clinton Road as detour. State Project HO-15535, bridge replacement of Billy Goat Road. You have a contract in the R.
It'll be all right.
Take your name, please.
Derek Hill, Director DPW. I'm here to ask you all to approve the, in a governmental agreement for, to allow DOTD to use the parish roads as detour routes, Caruth Road and Wilson Clinton Road.
Because you were thinking of Billy Goat.
Replace, uh, Billy Goat Bridge.
Yeah, but, yeah, but an agreement in your, in your, in your papers.
Is this a good idea that they care after normal?
That was my question. I wanted to see, were there any provisions for that? I didn't come across them, but I'm trying to read this rapidly, Mr. Hill.
At this time, not at this time, but we have another meeting on July the eighth at one o'clock for the final meeting to get the full details of the preparations involved.
Well, I'm not, I'm not against doing it tonight, but it would be with the understanding that what happened in my district does not happen to the next juror and that we get something in writing to the effect of, we're either going to be helped with repair of the road to put it back to what it is as of today, or they're going to fund it, or what, how we're going to handle that. I don't want it to happen to the next juror, because it's a bad spot to be in.
Okay, understand.
So I'll make a motion to approve it as long as we have something in there to restore the road to the condition, I don't know what condition it's in.
Yes, sir.
And make sure that's in there, something like that?
I'll second.
Appreciate you.
Any more discussion? Question from the audience, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
In a poll, motion carries.
And I give you two.
All right, okay.
Okay, let's move on. Committee and staff report, State Committee, I have one thing. Engineer RFP review for Engineering Services. I'd like to appoint a committee, not just for jury, just go to recommendation, advocate, to bring a recommendation back to the jury. I'm appointing Finance Committee as the committee. Because y'all were talking about engineers, you have a choice. The school, you own engineer now, okay? So the Finance Committee will be responsible for bringing us a recommendation back for Engineering Services.
When does that come in?
Is that RFP or ROP?
RFP.
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 So the, um, the deadline is, you can't have them, the packets have to be turned in, no later than ten AM on Wednesday, July twenty-third. And the police jury will receive a recommendation on August fourth. So between July twenty-third and August fourth, since the Finance Committee is appointed, this will have to be a Finance Committee meeting.
I hope we have twelve of them.
I'll, I'll tell you how many. You'll have, you'll have that many.
Well, since it's been, uh, it's been maybe a week and I've received about, I've had to send us a packet to about eight different, next best, of, of them. So you've already got them? They're going to submit bids, but they are interested?
Yeah, okay. We got to be holding the money in Engineering Services.
Well, I don't say the fourth, because the Thursday, we have to post budget. I work hard to have them.
By the Thursday. Okay. Yep, y'all board, Finance Committee.
I'm going to do what I'm called upon to do.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm with Mr. Richard.
That's what I call you, is just work together, I agree with you. Okay, that's all I have. Next, Portman Committee, I have a question on the Court.
Uh, we're going to have a meeting at five o'clock on Thursday.
Anything else? And let's move on, Finance Committee, Mr. Kyle Flanagan.
I have three items. Uh, item A is a motion to approve monthly invoices.
Motion carries.
Any discussion? Question from the audience, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
In a poll, motion carries.
Uh, second item is item B, Recommendation Award Bid for Debris Monitoring to Volker. Uh, Mr. Darryl Bueller, I'm going to ask you to come up and make a small, uh, presentation. And then we're going to work to the final item.
We did a RFP for Volker. Hey, who was the winner on it? But we went through it, I mean, Kyle and Chrissy, Richard and Louis and myself was on the committee. And I know they're just looking for, hey, excitement to do another RFP. And you know, some of y'all, I gave the books to, how thick they were. And how much reading you had to do and compare everything.
Be grateful, yeah.
Hey, they did a good job on it and for the debris monitoring, it was Volker. Hey, they won the contract right there, because we had to rank them on a whole bunch of different guidelines on it. And Volker won the guideline, won the contract on it.
I make that motion.
Second, second.
Any more discussion? Question from the audience, are they all in favor?
Uh-huh.
In a poll, motion carries.
And the, uh, third item would be Recommendation Award Bid for Debris Removal to Series.
Yeah. That was the tightest one we had on there. Hey, between the three companies on there that did it, hey, it was one point different from number one and number two.
I make that motion, second.
And both these companies have worked for the parish in the past.
Yep.
Hey, this guy here, hey, he's a local guy from Zachary. We claim him because he's from Zachary now. So, hey, he's, uh, representing Volker, they doing our debris monitoring on it.
Right, just, just one correction.
Take your name, please.
Uh, Jesse Perkins with Volker. Just one correction, I'm really from West Feliciahanna.
Oh, okay. That seems better.
But, uh, I would like to express, uh, the thanks for, to the jury for selecting Volker. I think we've been, uh, monitoring for a couple of years now. And, uh, our intent is to do a very, very acceptable and professional job in this process. Uh, and I would just like to thank the jurors who supported it. Uh, Jimmy Screen, as well as Chad Lynch, who's out of town, so he asked me to come and express thanks on behalf of Volker to the police jury. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Anything else, Mr. President?
Um, yes, uh, we're going to be having, uh, two finance meetings coming up. One will be this Wednesday, the ninth, and next Wednesday, I believe it is the sixteenth, if I'm not mistaken, that is correct.
You will let them know about the other one?
And yes, we will let you know about the other one that we were just, uh, nominated to do. So we will be in touch.
Okay. Let's move on. Public Working Equipment, Mr. Jason McCray.
I don't have anything right now, Mr. President.
Building Property, Mr. Dickson Steve.
I don't have anything, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Administerate of Mal, Treasury Department.
Just a few things. Um, the first thing is, today, we received two hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred dollars and forty-five cent from Hurricane Delta for debris removal. And, um, this should go back into your solid waste fund. I did also do some research on the Housing Choice Voucher. So what I found out is this, um, these vouchers or the assistance is Louisiana-wide. So you can, you don't have to go through the parish to be on this list. You can reach out to several different, um, entities. I have something from the Department of Housing and Urban Development as one, but you would have to do an application to them. They did tell me it's a, it can be a pretty lengthy process, but someone would come out to check your home, to make sure that you're eligible for that. So, you don't have to, actually, the parish doesn't have to have for this. Um, that is what I, with the, the, what I did to do some research, that's what I found out. And I think that may be it.
Reverend Turner, a soldier for this project, could you give him information, let him go over eventually? Could you pass it on to Reverend Turner?
Reverend Turner from...
East Feliciahanna from Turner Road. Uh, I couldn't quite hear what you were saying. If she got, she got information, you can pass it on to him. Okay, she has some information she wanted to pass on to me? I want to pass it on to you.
It's just the information about the batteries. Um, it's parish-wise, so you don't have to, it doesn't have, I'm sorry, statewide, so it doesn't have to start with the parish in order for someone to be on that list.
Okay, but if that person is from East Feliciahanna, someone in East Feliciahanna has to administrate that.
Yes, no.
No, sir, it's a legal process, it's state.
I was told by Mr. Andrews, who I spoke with, I can give you some information. Um, from him, I can send you maybe his phone number, but he didn't tell me that that someone from the parish should have to, um...
Okay, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, follow through it. I appreciate, um, Alicia taking the time out to, you know, uh, follow through and, and acquire as much information as she could. But, uh, let me, let me do a little research and I'm going to see what, what else is provided for this. Yes, sir.
I'm under the impression that the parish has to have a housing authority?
I, I know you have to have one. I'm not under the impression, because this is, these are, these, see, this is from the state, but these are federal requirements. Now, I do understand that the new administration, uh, has made, the new federal administration has made a lot of new changes. Like, for an example, uh, Louisiana doesn't have, uh, federal representation anymore. It's, it's been administered out of Texas. So Texas office, uh, controls the whole southern region, you know? So let me find out how, how this applies to the new regulations and then I'll get that. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Reverend Turner. Ms. Harris? You have two?
I do have a motion in the state for series.
Call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
In a poll, motion carries. Go ahead, Ms. Harris. AMB, huh?
Yes, you are. I have, um, this is talking about series.
Sorry. Um, request change in employment status for Rachel Kelly to permanent with step increase. That's DPW Director. Um, do you have anything to say? There is a copy of the...
Evaluation.
Evaluation.
Ms. Hill, say your name again.
Derek Hill, DPW Director. Uh, Ms. Rachel has exceeded her probationary period, she has been evaluated. Uh, she does a really good job in the office, uh, managing the phone PO's paperwork. Uh, I think her and, and Ms. Nikki and Mr. Yamisha works well together. So I am asking for her to be, uh, changed from, uh, to permanent.
I make the motion, Mr. U. Is that to the permanent?
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
I, I want to know, uh, what step number?
It's gone from step six to step seven.
Step seven?
Six to seven, next step.
Six to seven?
Six to seven, okay. How high your steps go, I'm just curious, Mr. Hill?
Uh, fifteen.
Okay, good, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You are.
Motion, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
In a poll, motion carries.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulate, condolences to one, Mr. Carey, one and two. Okay, Ms. Harris.
Um, recommendations to hire Tonya Nos, a senior permit technician.
Step twelve, um, CBO Jeff Wiggum.
I have a question about that. Is there...
All right.
Yeah. It's step, what happened, step one to eleven, does she have a query?
So, I'm basing it off of what I believe. Um, I'm basing it off of what's in the budget, uh, that's already been approved by y'all. And, um, in the past, in the past, supervisors have, uh, been allowed to recommend to y'all what they believe what the hire should be.
What is the rate of that?
Twenty-four and some change?
I'd like to see this come before the Finance Committee, so I'd like to table it, have it come before the Finance.
You're going to table, uh, the salary or the hiring? Because that's, that's delaying my process.
We, we don't have to just, we don't have to delay the hiring from budget, we delay several...
But she may not want, if I change the salary, she may not want to know.
All right, so here's my question. Uh, if I want to start her at the same thing that the other lady left off at, which has already been approved in the budget, I, I don't see how that can be turned down.
Jeff, the sound, the stepping is...
Yes, the step twelve, yeah.
If, and, and I've said this, if I was going to get me a teaching job, I would expect to be at the top of the step. I have history there, you know, I've got good evaluation there. I would expect to be at the top, twelve is pretty close to the top. But if I want to be a grader operator, you're going to hire me at step two, or one, or three. That's the way I feel about it. And she doesn't have permit experience, she's got experience...
And what?
In finance?
Correct.
And she may be the perfect person for the job, but that's, that's too high. That's how I feel. Since you're on the general funds.
Yeah, and the budget's already been approved, that's why I guess my question, my, that's what I struggle with. Like, why, why does that have to come before the Finance Committee?
So the budget, uh, where they come, is this coming out the, the general, or is it coming from the permit?
The money goes to the general fund, but it, it should probably generate the fund.
Mine's self-sufficient, okay?
Yeah.
The, the building fund is self-sufficient.
For some reason, we put that together whenever Aaron Ron was in office. We put all of his funds in with him.
Into the general fund.
Into the general fund, which I don't think we should have done that.
Mr. Jason, I want to ask you a question. When Mr. Hill brings people before us, or has in the past, or even Ms. Gwen, has there ever been a change or discussion of steps for DPW employees, for example? And that, that was my question, if we haven't done...
If we haven't done it before, why would we modify it now?
I feel like if you pay her, then I guess that's what you should pay her, then I guess that's, well, it's a place of the team, but you generate general funds and, you know.
That's the way I look at it.
With the pleasure of the jury.
Well, I mean, I know we've discussed that managers, usually the managers that have the open in their departments, usually it's at their discretion. But I thought that the pay is, it goes to the finance committee for approval. Now, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong. I just wanna do this right, and I wanna do it right first go around.
Well, usually, you ask that question, cop, usually it goes according to their work experience?
Yeah.
That they come in, or what step they come in on?
Mm-hmm.
And if they're already there, the recommendation will come from the DPW Director personally. But when a new hire comes in, it's according to what they, when they talked about their job, is an operator. And he's been operating for ten, fifteen years. He won't come in at the bottom.
Right, yeah. I understand, yeah, they wouldn't, because they have that experience.
I see what Dr. O'Quinn's saying as well, too.
If I'm just
If she's a teacher, she gonna come in, come in and teach a job, she won't, but she's got the experience. But I, like I said, if I come in, and I've just been driving a truck, wanna teach a bachelor class, they not gonna, probably won't get hired anyway. Though if I do, I'm gonna be hired upon the apprentice or someone, and not making it. I can see what he's saying, but the step twelve and that, I have to see
Too high.
What the thing is, to me.
What is the difference in, like, say, step ten and twelve, fifteen?
Thirty cents?
And I, I say you are thirty cents. Ten is one?
No, eleven, which is where the other girl was, and twelve, which is where I want to start her. Is how much, Amicia, it's gotta be thirty cents, if that.
Mr. Williams, this lady have a, a degree in something, or?
I'm basing it off of just work experience, and, and, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So we have somebody that has not had any experience in, in this area, and then we have ladies that are working here, that have been working here for five or six years.
Which has been brought to y'all before for a raise, that y'all have never done anything about it.
No, we told them no.
Why, why, why take that out on me? I'm serious, I, I'm just, just being honest. Why now, why me? Like, in the past
Oh, we didn't give them the raise.
Exactly.
They came three, three months ago and asked for it, we didn't give it to them. So we're just kind of, we're in a budget crunch, so we're asking, it's not picking on you.
Mr. Williams needs, Mr. Williams needs this person in place, 'cause we got employees that need to be doing something else. And she's doing part of his job.
Responsible job, she needs her.
She needed to hire his technician.
So your budget has topped out at how much, like, what is her top end?
So my budget, that been approved by y'all, okay, is step eleven. Okay, step eleven has already been approved. And I'm just, I'm Exactly. And I'm having a hard time seeing why, even if I change the motion to move to step eleven, I don't see how that can be denied. It's already been approved in the budget.
Nikki has a question.
Yes, ma'am. Say your name, please. Come to the mic, yes, you do.
Nikki Cheatham. Um, I work here, and I've been here for four years, and I thought we were on, like, a hole for us to get a raise until December. So how is it that somebody can come in? I know, if it's twenty-four and some change, I get that, so I've been here for four years, so I'm not sure what type of experience that the lady has, but if it's gonna be more than me, can I apply for that? Because I just don't feel like if we didn't have the money now for her, I mean, for me, how do we get the money for someone else? That's why I'm just, I don't understand how that works. And I remember Mr. Olivoe saying, we had to wait till December. I do a lot here, and I don't think that's fair. And I just wanted to let that be known and placed on the record. Thank you.
And Dr. O'Quinn just said, just said that, that we didn't give them a raise, because they're in the financial crunching, so I just I'm not trying to deny you anything, but I'm just saying to the finance committee, like y'all say, to be fair, y'all discuss that.
So the finance committee is gonna decide what steps she should start out?
Yes.
I don't think that's, but I should be able, should be some I, I, I don't work with her, I don't know what her God's script is gonna be, and
Yes, that's, that's why we go to the finance, it's just like when we was hiring the parish manager. You had those people who were bitten the parish manager, brought it back to the, to the, to the, to the board.
Go ahead, Mr. Michelle, come to the mic.
Look, based on experience, and I've been with the jury since 2010, this jury has a history of hiring a brand-new person at what the previous person with experience left at. And that's wrong. I don't care what, where you are in the workforce, that's not the way it's done. The last time y'all hired a parish manager, it went from seventy thousand to eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-two thousand.
Not just, okay, eighty, well, okay, eighty-two, plus four weeks of vacation, it went up. Uh, I can tell you, that's just not the way it's done. You get hired based on experience, you get paid based on experience. If you're new in a thing, okay, come in here and show us what you can do in the next six months, and then you might get a raise, a bigger raise in January, when you typically do your one-step increase or whatever. But you demonstrate the ability you have. You don't come in and bump up, you keep bumping up your budget, if you keep hiring at a, what the, like, previous person left at, that's, financially, that's disastrous. I'm sorry, that's the way the business world works.
Thank you, Mr. Michelle. I have one question. So what's, what's the motion? First of all, first of all, we didn't hire the person yet. She might accept the job. How can we still serve for a person we didn't hire?
So we have a meeting on Thursday at five, this will be us, the meeting
It's gonna be the finance committee.
He may recommend
Which is, which is Wednesday, uh, four, I believe, if I'm telling you the time correctly.
Yeah, which is Wednesday night.
The night, yes, ma'am.
Uh, one last question. Uh, Mr. Williams, I just wanna, how, how many application, applicants did you receive for, uh, and I'm, I'm just curious first, do you have anyone that had any?
Eighteen, eighteen, I interviewed three.
You got eighteen, you gonna do three?
Correct.
You have, you have, you have a panel interviewing, or just you?
Him and Amicia.
Me and Ms. Harris.
So we just stopped at three, or then we go through all the applicants? I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, just being, being fair, him, you know, that you go through all, kind of see who has what, and that, saying that lady wouldn't be, what I was saying?
I did.
Uh, the perfect person for you, but, I'm just sitting here, just
I said in the interviews for the three, he chose to interview the person.
Okay.
First of all, when a, when a supervisor apply for a person, he go work, the jury don't want that person.
That's true.
He make a recommendation, what he wanna hire.
Right.
We don't make a recommendation to him, he make it to the jury. I want a pilot, Saturday, but I can't fly an airplane.
I also know that's very hard to find work, because I think you need to appreciate people a fair amount, I get that.
I don't have, other problem I have with this, you're gonna take on a new hire, making more money than people here five or six years.
That's right, exactly.
With no experience that's been, been
This doesn't seem fair to people that's already been here for, for five years. Like you say, like Mr. Foster just had a perfect example. He hired Ms. Kelly, and he came up here just a few minutes ago and bumped up, because he saw what she can do, not start out at
Performance, you mean?
Yeah, your performance, so
Who recommended the step, uh, Ms. Rachel was hired at?
Uh
The DPW Director?
There you go.
Yes.
With the experience. But therein, I think a lot of we hire, except well, never she was hired. So she had experience, like a lot of when she hired She was hired as a
So what's, what's, what's the pleasure, so what's the pleasure of the, of hiring this note and
She's going back with the motion, it's on tape, so
Go back to the process again.
Financial statement.
Do y'all have something as a point?
Yeah, we do.
Yes.
Because you can hire them one amount, and after six more
That's generally how
To go one step Bump, bump up a step after they, uh, make the provision.
You go two steps if you want to, if necessary.
Yeah, there won't be enough steps left.
That's true. It's only going, it's fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, as senior permit technician, what is step one then?
We have fifteen steps, and she almost at the max, so
Right, I should know what was they started at, like where, to go from here to there, where
Come here. I just
So the finance, so we're gonna go to finance committee, and they're gonna vote on what step to start the girl that I wanna hire at, who they've never met, they don't know anything about? Is that kind of what I'm getting?
That's the word you're coming from the jury.
Okay.
Okay, what, what's, all in favor?
Aye.
In a poll, motion carry?
Thank y'all.
They meet at four o'clock on Wednesday. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Harris? Homeland Security, Ms. Darrell Beal.
All right, real quick. In your books up there, we gave y'all the updated copy for this year of the pet plan, the severe weather plan, and the shelter plan. That's for y'all to bring home and keep with you, you'll see what we have to do in an emergency. So it's all been approved by the
You got a copy?
Department of Agriculture, the state, and everybody's going through it. That's all I got.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next, turning it on in commission, have recommendation to approve A to G. A to just information on it.
Make a question, second.
Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Dexter Armstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain? Mr. Michael Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Olivoe? Dr. Chrissy Oakwin?
Yes.
President Louis Kemp?
Yes. The last one, there's information on it, okay? Public comment. Any public comment? Good afternoon, board members. Reverend Turner, from Alpha, I have two items. The first item, I'm gonna go over real fast. Uh, this document that Ms. Harris just shared with me, this document is a federal document. And federal language can be difficult to understand at times, okay? But anyway, in the first paragraph of this document, it says, contact your, your local public housing authority. What that actually means, because it's federal language, you must have a housing authority. You must have a housing authority.
So Mr. Andrews is, that didn't help with Mr. Andrews, but Mr. Andrews is who I
Spoke with, um, the Louisiana Housing Authority, and that's who told me it's a statewide thing, and you don't have to have a housing authority in your parish. Your local housing authority can be who's as close to you as their housing authority. I mean, your local Greater Food Bank is in that area. Greater, anyway. I mean, just, I don't know, but we can outsteal a little bit to it.
Okay, let, let me just clarify something, so there's no misunderstanding. The, the state cannot overrule a federal program. It cannot do that. Only Congress can do that. This is a federal document, this is not a state document. But anyway, but what I'm trying to say is that I can assist you guys, if that's what you really wanna do, to go through this process, 'cause I used to draft policies for the housing commission.
I stated you work with Ms. Harris on those matters.
Okay, 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 that's the first item. The second item is, um, the state statutes authorize the police jury to address concerns of the poor, the low and moderate income people. One of the items that I would like to be on the agenda for in August is to address a policy that would provide assistance in the development of affordable housing for, uh, first responders, veterans, and low and moderate income people, where that the lot size could not be no more than a half an acre.
Didn't we approve something at a meeting?
Yeah, definitely.
And it didn't involve first responders and everything? We just approved something for a tax, and when
That's for the tax, that's for the tax home and health purposes.
No, it was the A, remember that lady that
No, it wasn't, no. See
It, it was a lady that spoke, I can't recall her name.
Yeah, but she spoke with a veteran, the first responder, she did.
Yes, I do remember that.
But it was a housing plan?
Yes, it was to help.
Won the tax?
No, it was actually to help facilitate the housing.
But you do not have, but you do not have a, first-time home, home buyers are totally different from the income of low and moderate income people. Now, state statutes say you have to have, um, special consideration for this group of society. You just can't overlook them.
Would that not mean if you might come in, you would address that way, and then do a basis?
No, you, for, just like for an example, if you drafted a policy for a certain income group of people, you have to do the same thing for low-income people.
So is this completely different, I know we're talking, you say housing, um, I know there's different apartment complexes here in, in this, this town, that they actually
Have a seat.
Rent based off the income. But you're speaking different from rental, are you speaking buying homes?
Buying homes, this is, this is for development of communities for low and moderate income people.
They're for affordable housing.
Affordable, yeah. No, no, no.
Then you
Vouchers can be used to purchase a home. They can be used.
When you said communities, you're talking subdivision?
Yes. Low and moderate income. You cannot favor one group in society. Now, the, the state statutes say you have to have special consideration for this group of society.
For the poor?
Yeah, you, you, you have to have, you have to address their needs, just like you address the needs of those people you just, you just approved for. All I'm doing is trying to represent their, their interests and their need. Somebody got to speak up for the poor.
My Bible tell me that we're always poor among us, so we have to look out for the poor, uh, people.
I, I a hundred percent agree with that, however, it cannot be determined by government, you are self-individual, the governments, so the Bible does not say the government should
Yeah, but government cannot, cannot distribute it on wealth.
We could definitely go great helping everybody, like we still have
Well, you know, you cannot favor one segment of Well, no, no, I'm saying you are.
How will we, how will we favor?
Because you all just approved a two-acre requirement for this income group of people. Poor people can't afford that.
Actually, no.
A two-acre
A two-acre, um, what is that, what do we call it?
Okay, okay.
They can have a half acre, they can have a quarter acre.
Okay, okay.
Well, a half.
You got twelve thousand five hundred, that's the number.
Okay, all, all, all I'm, all I'm doing is just in April, I mean, not April, in August, I would like to come back in August, and then we can discuss this a, a little bit further. But I just wanted to share with y'all where I'm coming from. I appreciate all the help you have.
I want to see the billionaires in here, I want to thank, I want to see the billionaires in here.
Thanks a lot, there.
We gonna look out for the poor.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Reverend Turner. If not, any more discussion?
Move to adjourn?
Some move.
Well, y'all, y'all paying tonight, isn't it?